I was gonna say it.
Good evening and welcome to the September 28th City Council meeting. We're almost ready to begin. I call the September 28th City Council meeting to order. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't usually have this big of a crowd unless there's a controversy, but tonight we get to do something fun and honor someone who means so much to so many. Charles Fowler and his family, would you please step forward toward the podium?
All of the family.
Good, great.
That'll take a crap of them.
You can look at the crowd.
That way.
Look out this way, but I'm gonna be right in your way.
You're doing fine.
You just tell me when. Is that it? Sure. Sure, they're saying no, okay. Whereas, Charles Fowler began his career as a grocer in 1958. And whereas, Charles and his family moved to Stillwater in 1971 when he became manager of The Humpty Grocery, later Consumers IGA, located at Sixth Avenue and Washington Street. And whereas, Charles purchased Consumers IGA in 1994 and operated it at the same location until it closed on September 26, 2015. Whereas, Charles and his wife Joanne were inducted into the Chamber Hall of Fame in 2003 and were awarded the highest honor from the Associated Wholesale Grocers for Community Commitment in 2014. And whereas, Consumers IGA is widely recognized as a Stillwater institution, known for its high quality and friendly service. And whereas, Charles is the consummate Stillwater citizen, always there to help out his community, his church, schools, organizations, those in need. And whereas, such words as integrity, loyal, generous, kind-hearted, and compassionate only begin to describe Charles. And whereas, it is both fitting and appropriate that Charles Fowler be honored by the mayor and city council. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Gina J. Noble, mayor of the city of Stillwater and the Stillwater City Council, do hereby proclaim September 28, 2015, as Charles Fowler Day in the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, and hereby recognize and thank Charles Fowler, a real hero for his family and community, for his many contributions to the city of Stillwater. Thank you. There's a few things. I shouldn't have done that. There are a few things that I didn't get to say in the proclamation that I think are fitting for today. You have the respect and admiration of everyone in this town I've never seen. There was so many people at your reception. We've heard about you since I've been here 15, more than 15 years. You make each person feel special when you meet them. And you are a role model for all of us. And you are loved by so many in this city. We're all proud to call you friend. And would you like to say a few words? You don't have to.
You come right up here, come right up here.
Who am I preaching to? Just following you. Forty-five years ago, this is a true story. Forty-five years ago, in Elk City, Oklahoma, which our family, we were there for seven years in the grocery business. The upper echelon came to me from my company and said, "We've got four locations for you. We need you to relocate." And I said, "Hmm, I don't know about that." So we talked, Joanne and I and the kids. Kevin had a tear in his eyes and Mom had a tear in her eyes. And I said, "We're staying." So I'll go back and give them a call and I said, "We're gonna stay." And they said, "No, we got a 2% store, this, this, you need to go." And I said, "No." So a couple of weeks later, they came back with another store, another option. And that was Stillwater, Oklahoma. We were concerned and we were still a little teary-eyed about it. And so I called my dad. We were confused. I called my dad and I said, "Dad, we were supposedly, they want us to relocate." And he said, "Where to?" And I named him off and he said, "You haven't got a choice. Stillwater, Oklahoma is the only place to go, be there." And that's what happened. Forty-five years later, I'm standing here in Stillwater. Thank you.
And the grocers, we would like the store family to come up as well. And you're gonna have.
What's the matter?
Want to be in their picture. Don't a photo bomb.
This is a good family, why wouldn't you want your picture?
That's true. I bet I was thinking right over Charlie's shoulder.
Hey Kevin.
Good job.
That's where it goes.
Why don't you?
You betcha.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now this looks like regular city council. Okay, we have a few speakers for the public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing. Our first speaker is Trevor J. Stewart. Would you please come forward and state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Trevor Stewart. I live at 315 South Blair Street here in Stillwater. And I'm also the executive director of Oklahoma Freewill, the only cross-state bicycle tour of Oklahoma. The Complete Streets is a key to building a sustainable and vibrant, healthy community. And that's one thing that we at Oklahoma Freewill, when we pick our towns to go tour, is we look for that. We want to make Stillwater a more enjoyable place to live and a more active community. And we want to attract more business, more professionals, more students, professors, and more retirees, since we are a retirement community too. And having a Complete Streets program involving everybody like that is a way to increase those and bring more people in. Doesn't matter if you're driving, walking, cycling, anything. We all need to be able to get from point A to point B. And having a Complete Streets program will help. Especially here in Stillwater, we have a lot of sidewalks just go nowhere, stop in the middle of the yard or bicycle lanes just go nowhere. We need to have a better plan for that. And as part of tourism, which I'm mainly in, we look for that, like I said. And we want to come and work with communities that are looking for a better and active lifestyle and a healthier lifestyle for their citizens and in Oklahoma in general. Oklahoma ranks awful when it comes to health. And something like this can increase that and then help the value of our city too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Taylor.
Mayor, council members. Hadn't had a chance to formally introduce myself to you, but I am your field representative for the Department of Transportation for North Central Oklahoma. If you ever have any questions, feel free to call me at any point in time. I'd like to give you a progress update on the eight-year construction work plan. First off, I would like to start out with a thank you. Thank you for your interest in transportation and your support for transportation. And it's certainly reflected in our eight-year construction work plan. To give you a rundown, we'll start off in Stillwater, if that's okay, and kind of work our way out. Sixth and Parkings is scheduled for February 2016. To the north on Parkings, between McElroy and Lakeview, we're scheduled for 2020. We have a project also to put shoulders on the divided four lane on State Highway 51 from I-35 into Stillwater. That project is scheduled for 2020. We also have a project that we put into the program last year on 51, which takes off from the Parkings Sixth Street project. So Sixth Street out to Western. We put that project in 2022 and hope to be visiting with you in the future on some possibilities that I think we have and look forward to that. There is a project in 2023, which is the, from the Turnpike going north, which basically takes a two-lane, two-way roadway and we make it four lanes up to 64. We have a project in Yale going through Yale. Well, the good news is, is the rough pavement from State Highway 18 going into Yale. We have a project in the 2018 work program to take care of that. We're gonna go through Yale. It's basically a pavement rehabilitation project, three projects that take place in 2018 that takes us all the way to the east side of Yale. The four lane between Guthrie and Parkings, or the fifth lane there in Parkings, that this year as part of our eight-year construction work plan, we put the entire package is now complete. So the entire divided four lane, the last being the bridge over the Cimarron River, was added to the program this year. So we have a four lane from Guthrie to the fifth lane in Parkings, all in the eight-year construction work plan. We also plan on replacing the Cimarron River Bridge on I-35. It looks like it's in pretty good shape, but the problem is in the river channel down below, scour issues. When we do that, we plan on building the bridge for ultimately, ultimate, three lanes each direction. This year in November, we let, we will be letting approximately 17 miles of asphalt overlay from about Mulhall on I-35 all the way to 177, I mean 77 in Guthrie. So the South-Guthrie interchange all the way to Mulhall, that trip that we have to make so often on that rough asphalt. We hope by late spring next year that we'll have a new surface for you to drive on. I'm sure there's a lot of projects that you're interested in. I would be more than happy to answer any of your questions. But I basically wanted to introduce myself to you and let you know I'm available to you. And I work with cities and help cities each and every day. And I don't want to be your representative.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for? Yes? Yes.
Would you, first of all, I appreciate you being here. The cooperation and the attention that Stillwater is getting from ODOT here in recent years has been unprecedented. Maybe it's been here and I just didn't notice it. But they're sure, I mean, Country Club, Western Road, lots of projects underway. Just a rough-out estimate of what is the financial commitment that ODOT is making for all of these projects that you just rattled off?
I don't have an exact number for you, but I'm gonna give you a close number. It's gonna be close to 100 million in the eight-year construction work plan. And you know, well, my thanks to you. Your interest and support for transportation makes these things possible. And we certainly appreciate the city council and the other elected officials within Payne County. And we definitely want to be a good neighbor.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Steve Spradling.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. Those of you that don't know me, I am the Director of Parking and Transportation for OSU. I oversee the parking on campus, all 15,000-plus spaces of it, plus the transit system, both on OSU campus, Stillwater's transit system, as well as the OSU Tulsa Shuttle to and from our OSU Tulsa campus. I also oversee the bikes on the Stillwater campus. We oversee the permits and enforcement of parking of the bikes. And we also have a bike shop and a repair station, as well as 75 rental bikes in our fleet. And I oversee fleet services on top of that on campus. So last year, we carried over 700,000 passenger trips in the city of Stillwater. And 11,000 of those were disability trips. And if you haven't seen our new buses that we just wrapped and rebranded around town as The Ramp, those are our disability-only buses. We have three of those and we just replaced them with brand-new CNG buses. I am definitely a proponent for Complete Streets and for alternative transportation. I oversee about every mode you can think of, other than airplanes, here in Stillwater. And my only concern is with the Complete Streets is that I want to voice is that we don't whitewash everything and we don't put transit aside to promote any other form of alternative transportation. I bought some visual aids, if I may pass those out.
Sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
What you're gonna see on the first two pages, these are actually onboard cameras on our buses. And the first two pages came off of our brand-new over-the-road coaches that run to and from Tulsa, the ones that have the giant Pistol Pete on the side of them. And these buses are legal width of 102 inches wide, which is eight-and-a-half feet. But the mirrors are about 10 feet wide. And some of them are a little over 10 feet wide. So my concern is with our Complete Streets. And like I said, I am a proponent and I encourage bicycles. And we even require a bicycle quiz to get a bike permit for the OSU campus, a safety quiz, so that people are safe. But if you'll notice, that the first two pages correspond to each side of the bus. These buses have a camera on both sides. And you'll see that in the first picture, you know, on one side of the bus, the bus is actually on the line. But if you look on the other side, there's only about eight or nine inches of space on that side of the bus, which leaves very, very little room for error. And the next two are just in comparison. So you got about four-and-a-half inches. And this is on Lakeview Road. Sorry, I forgot to mention that part. This is on Lakeview Road, just outside of our transit facility, coming to and from our transit facility. And the third page is actually three pictures. And we only have curbside cameras. And that's from one of our disability buses with the ramp. So that's really all I had to share with you. I thank you for your time. And I am a proponent. I just want us to be sure that we take into account all modes of transportation while we're planning the future of Stillwater. Thank you.
Anybody have a question for Mr.? The pictures we're looking at are up against a bike lane, correct?
That's the center lane, actually. The bus is in the center lane.
On the third page?
Oh, the third page, yes. The third page is, yes, that's the bike lane.
And you're saying that the mirrors stick out from the bus?
Yes.
So do the mirrors hit the bicycle riders?
We haven't hit any bicycle riders, thankfully. I take that back. We've been hit by bicycle riders, but not in the bike lanes. That's them in the crosswalks where they don't belong. So we have had a couple hit us, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, you know, just putting my OSU hat on and I have to be honest and say, Mr. Spradling works up through my chain. This is a very concerning matter for us. We are putting our buses in a situation where they could injure someone by following the path that we've laid out for them. And we would be at risk financially if we were sued by a bicycle rider, assuming they lived. But I guess their estate could also sue us. So we wouldn't come and make a statement about the bus lanes if we didn't have a serious concern. We located the bus transit facility up on Lakeview because we thought the community was making that a major collector, transportation hub. And it was logical for us to vent our buses in and out from that street. And this is making it very difficult. And we have to reevaluate what we're gonna do. But we've already spent the funds to locate up there on Lakeview. These buses are too wide for these lane widths on Lakeview. And that's our hub. So I don't know what the answer is completely, but this isn't gonna work. And if Stillwater values the bus system, we have to be careful not to put these buses in the path of bicyclists or motorists. If you'll notice on that first picture, I haven't seen these until just now. But you can see that one car that's coming at the bus is moving over and getting in the bike lane too. Because that is a little tight. So like Mr. Spradling said, at OSU, we're for a complete transportation system. But this isn't it, just in my opinion, one counselor's opinion. So I feel better now.
And I'm gonna, since I'm the newbie still, I think my question too is then, and maybe it'll shed light when we see more Complete Streets, because this is a new one for me too. But I guess I'm concerned, how did we get bike lanes put on a street that's gonna be not safe for bike lanes to be utilized? Is there, I mean, and maybe Mr. Pete can help us with that as far as are there rules? And I mean, how do we figure out what streets are the right ones to put those lanes on? I just, I want.
Sure, and we can go into this more in the discussion. But Lakeview in particular, in 2012, that was presented to the mayor and council as a recommendation to add bike lanes to that street. And we had money left over from the previous project to widen Lakeview through ODOT. And so that project was approved through council, let and reviewed through the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, and actually contracted and managed by ODOT. There are what are called minimum standards. The original recommendation we put to city manager was to actually do three lanes on Lakeview, which had plenty of capacity to handle present and future traffic, would have made wider lanes, wider bike lanes. And the decision was made that we would not reduce the number of lanes on Lakeview. And so the question was, could we still accommodate bicycle facilities and the traffic lanes? And so we were able to do that and meet the nationally published design standards. You know, I don't dispute the concerns that OSU has. I mean, lane widths is definitely something we can talk about. But I'd kind of like to defer, do we actually talk about the policy? So you have a understanding what we're talking about policy? Because we're really getting down into the weeds on the discussion like this.
And we'll hear your presentation in just a little while. We have one more speaker, Mr. Gary Ridley.
Mayor, members of the council. My name's Gary Ridley. I'm Secretary of Transportation for Oklahoma. Also helped a little bit with OSU on their transportation issues. I come to the council tonight to talk a little bit about Complete Streets and the need for them. What we at ODOT look at all modes of transportation. You're gonna look at bicycle traffic, vehicle traffic, pedestrian traffic, and certainly transit. And transit is a very big item here. As Mr. Spradling pointed out just a minute ago, the idea of having a major collector or road that comes up to your transit hub, and yet the lane widths will not accommodate the width of the buses, is discouraging for all. When we look at a transportation corridor, if we're going to put bicycle lanes on it, we want to make sure that it's wide enough to be able to handle the vehicle traffic as well as the bicycle lanes when you build it. Let me give you an example. The Country Club project that is recently completed with the funds by the county commissioner and some funds by the city. The Department of Transportation, as Brian pointed out, administered that project. And in the project, it was to be striped similar to what Country Club is. And the county commissioner and Brian Taylor and myself looked at the location. And the lane widths would have been similar to what they are on Lakeview. And it just would not accommodate the type of traffic that would be using Country Club. If you think about it, these are nine-and-a-half to 10-foot width lanes that you're having on Lakeview and if you put them out on Country Club. When we first had nine-foot lanes, that's when we had Model As. We changed it to Model Ts to 10-foot width lanes. And then in the 40s, 30s and 40s, we changed it to 11-foot lanes, so that a two-lane road was 22 feet wide. And that's what we built, the standard for Highway 66, when we built 66 in the 30s. We changed that in the 40s to get us to a 12-foot wide lane, so that it would accommodate wider vehicles, full-size pickups, have the mirrors out, making sure that cars could pass each other easily without incident. So when you go back, and now we're reducing those lane widths on a brand-new facility, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to us. And the department is certainly would be opposed to that. The way Brian was able to accommodate pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic was to work with the county commissioner and put a 10-foot wide sidewalk out there. That accommodates both. So in that corridor, we changed it from striping a bicycle lane, which would narrow the width of the vehicle traffic. We left them at full standard width and put a sidewalk out there, which really better accommodates everybody. We think that that is a good design. I think that the department and the city is working on Western Avenue to do the very same thing on Western Avenue, to allow for bicycle traffic. But I just caution you, when you decide that you want to go full bore on Complete Streets, that you understand that you need to use some common sense about it and not pinch the lanes of vehicle traffic up in order to accommodate a bicycle lane. You shouldn't pinch the bicycle lane either, narrow, to accommodate vehicle traffic. If the width is not there, then the width is not there and you need to do something else. And like Brian did out there on Lakeview or on Country Club, added additional width on the sidewalk to be able to accommodate bicycle traffic, which made sense. Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counselors?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley. I guess I should say Secretary Ridley. Okay, did I miss anyone? Okay. It moves us to general orders. And item A for general orders is establish a council subcommittee to conduct a search for the new city manager.
What happened?
Oh, no, he's running errand.
He's bailing. Got distracted.
Counselor Weaver, yes.
It just seems obvious to me that a subcommittee for this particular purpose, it makes sense that we would want to rely on our leadership, which would be you and the vice mayor. For such an important search, it seems to me that the leadership is the appropriate, appropriate way to go. So, that would be my motion, or if you need a motion.
I would second that, yeah.
So, thank you. Agreed? Okay, so, we need to vote. Yes, okay. So, we have a motion and a second to have the mayor and the vice mayor serve as the subcommittee for the search committee for the new city manager. Please vote. And that vote passes with, the motion passes with a vote of five to zero. And I forgot to say, Mr. Galloway has gone to a meeting tonight and can't be here. So, we welcome Mr. Dan Blankenship in his place.
Thank you.
For tonight.
For tonight.
For tonight.
Make that clear.
Just for tonight.
Just for tonight.
Item B, tax increment financing district report from city attorney, Mr. John Dorman. Mr. Dorman?
By statute, actually, 62OS subsection 867(c), whenever you create a tax increment financing district, you have to file a report of the performance of that district within 90 days of the end of your fiscal year, each year that that TIF is in place. And so, given that the city established the North Perkins Road TIF back in late fall of 2014, and that TIF became officially operational with the opening of the Academy store on June 19th of 2015, we are obligated to create a report. And I guess the report that I would make to you tonight is, there's not a whole lot to report. The TIF, as I say, went into effect in last fall. Academy opened 11 days before the end of the reporting period, and we don't have a tax report for a half month. They don't issue those types of reports. So, that, those funds would actually be reported with the following, with the July report. So, basically, what you will get is a very large report next year. But right now, we don't have a lot to report. The document that I circulated to you is the document that, with your permission, I would like to send to the taxing entities, and we'll publish in the news press in accordance with the Title 62 statute.
Do we need to take a vote on this?
Please.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to let Mr. Dorman...
Authorize the city attorney to distribute the report in accordance with the state statutes and publish.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Do we have a second on that? We have a motion and a second to have John issue the report. And that motion passes with a vote of five to zero. You may move forward with that, Mr. Dorman.
Thank you.
Item C, complete streets presentation by Transportation Director, Dr. Jason Peake.
Thank you, mayor and council. Wasn't sure, did y'all get a copy of the policy, proposed policy last week? Because I didn't see it online for people to download.
Thank you.
So, when, the last time we talked about this back in May, it was to be brought forth into a work session. So, really, tonight, we're not asking you to take any specific action on a policy. And my two main goals is, one, to build a kind of common understanding of what a complete streets policy is. And then, we do want to seek direction from you on how to proceed from here, because we do have a draft policy that was developed. So, I don't have a real formal presentation. I just kind of wanted to have a discussion with you. And first of all, I want to talk about what a complete streets policy is and what it isn't. It's a policy. So, it's something that provides guidance to staff on how we make transportation decisions. So, you know, as you heard in a lot of the comments before, there's a lot of different decisions that can be made on a project-specific basis. And some of those can have negative impacts. But that's not what this policy does. This policy paints a broader picture. And so, complete streets is unique to each community, but it typically has two common elements. One, there is a commitment to accommodate all users of the transportation system. This is our pedestrians, freight traffic, bicyclists, transit, and vehicles. I mean, it's not an exclusive policy. And the second part is it prioritizes safety for all users. And so, as we heard, there's a lot of different decisions that you can make in how you accommodate users and how you provide that safety. But first of all, the policy provides direction to staff. Is there a commitment and a willingness there? Because there's a lot of transportation organizations across the country that operate in a vehicle-only mode. They don't think about pedestrians or bikes. I'm not saying Stillwater or ODOT does that. But a complete streets policy is a direction from the elected body that, hey, this is what the community expects and wants out of its transportation system. Why are we talking about it to you? Well, we do not have a transportation policy for the city of Stillwater. And, you know, part of that may have been, you know, how we resulted in what we have on Lakeview versus what we have in other areas of town. We're trying to anticipate the needs, because we definitely have bicyclists, we have transit ridership, we have pedestrians, and we have lots of lack of pedestrian facilities. So, we have different ways that we've tried to accommodate that. The only guidance that we have as far as transitional documentation between councils and legislative bodies is the 2007 Stillwater Transportation Enhancement Plan. And that's a specific list of projects that was approved by a prior council. But it doesn't give us a lot of direction on how you want us to deliver those projects. We also have the 2009 Multi-Use Trail and On Street Bicycle Master Plan. That was another very specific list of projects. But how you want us to implement those, we don't have that overarching policy. And so, you know, the question I've asked is, how do we know that the proposed projects we deliver conform to the expectations of the community? And so, complete streets or some other transportation policy is a way for us as staff, as we engage with the consultants, as we engage with ODOT or OSU or other communities to say, hey, this is what our community wants. And so, back in 2014, we started down the path of what I call a complete streets initiative. In April of that year, we contracted with a nonprofit called Walkable and Livable Communities Institute. This is a organization founded by a gentleman by the name of Dan Burden. He's a nationally recognized expert on walkable and livable communities. He has helped develop complete streets policies in over 2,000 cities, small and large, nationwide. And we basically asked them for what we call capacity building assistance. We didn't want them to draft a policy for Stillwater. We wanted them to come here and help educate the community on what complete streets means and what does it do. And so, they came here. We had some public forums. We had presentations to council, some design activities. And then, that led us into basically a citizen committee effort to draft the policy that I passed out before you. And that started in September of 2014. And the members on that committee included David Thomas, Nigel Jones, had Tom Williams, who's also a bus driver for the university, Kent Radley, Doug Swanson, Pat Darlington, Karen Melcher, Daniel Thrasher, and Kevin Musset. And so, we walked this committee through what is complete streets, what would a complete streets policy look like in the city of Stillwater. And over the course of four months of that dialogue and discussion, it resulted in the draft policy that's in front of you. And, you know, basically, that policy includes four key elements. It provides a vision statement, so we know what the expectations are. It provides some prescription as far as where does complete streets apply. And in this policy, and it was a recommendation of that committee, was that we want to apply complete streets to all of our streets that the city is responsible for, including public and private development. It also provide a process for exceptions of, if someone wanted to seek an exception to a complete streets policy, how would they go about doing that? Or where are facilities that we might not do that? And it also provides reference to design guidelines. So, what engineering-type criteria would we use in implementing a complete streets policy? But what I would say to you, this is the first step. I mean, most communities, you're looking to see if there's that commitment for this policy. City of Tulsa, and I know Mike Bueker's here and probably can speak to that as well, they had the initial kind of policy statement. But just within the last two years, they've actually wrapped up what they call their, their Complete Streets Design Manual. So, it gets into the prescription about lane widths and kind of the details. But it was based on that, that initial formative policy. And so, with that, I just, that's kind of the background, the overview, and really just wanted to have a discussion and answer any questions or concerns that you may have. And like I said, seek direction. Do you want us to move forward with what's drafted, make some modifications to what's drafted, or go back to the drawing table?
Counselors? I'll ask first.
Okay.
Can we have more time to study it?
Absolutely.
With what we learned tonight from ODOT, and because I just haven't read all of this as carefully as I want to, I think there just might be some more questions. And just not for sure if I'm ready to vote.
Sure. Absolutely. Like I said, I mean, whatever, you know, you request us to do, that's what we'll do.
I think I'd like to say, I'm excited about the possibility that Stillwater is looking at how to include all forms of transportation, because it's, it's time that we think about that. I think my question, previous, as you guys kind of put this committee together, and this, this looks great. You're right. I wish I would have had this a little bit beforehand, so I could have looked at it a little bit more than, than tonight. I think my question is, the committee, the community committee that you put together, sounds like it was a great representation. But as we look at a complete streets program, doesn't that include other entities like OSU or ODOT to kind of sit at the table also and provide some, I mean, would the next step be to include them? It just concerns me, this committee was all community, which I think is great. We live it. We know it. We know the streets. But knowing the specific regulations, knowing the specific ways that we need to get things done. And there might be some streets truly and honestly, that as much as we want to have them be all accessible, the cost and the, and the implementation of that may be too much. So, where do we, where do we look at what we currently have that can be a complete street? And how do we move forward as we think about new streets that we're, we want to provide for Stillwater that will allow all forms of transportation to be used? And I guess that would be my question.
And now that you have, can I ask one question and then just?
Sure.
When you say complete streets, you were talking about city streets that we are responsible for? And are those different than what ODOT is responsible for?
Yeah. ODOT, I mean, we, we can't tell ODOT that to do X, Y, and Z on their street. Everything we do with ODOT, it's a partnership. And so, I mean, you'll see specifically in the, the policy, under applicability, it says, "Federal, state, and county transportation improvement projects shall be encouraged to include, to consider inclusion of a complete streets design approach in project development." So, it's encouraged. I mean, yeah, this affects major corridors, Sixth Avenue and Perkins Road. But I can tell you, you know, we worked with Brian Taylor on that, that Perkins Road project. In result of that is a complete streets design.
That's what you presented to us not too long ago.
Back at the beginning of the summer, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That was great, great.
Vice mayor?
I think that I was talking about this with some of my neighbors this afternoon, and some of the misunderstandings that, that they had often come up. Complete streets does not necessarily mean every street is a complete street. I mean, we're not talking about streets. This is really way up here in the idea of policy. And every street is different. Every street in a complete streets city has to be looked at individually and what the needs are there. Am I correct, Jason?
Absolutely. So, you know, there are lots of different examples of how people implement complete streets on individual streets, okay? But the, the policy, that broader level, is that that decision-making to design is going to include consideration for all users. You know, there are examples where some cities have gone through their street system and said, you know, this is primarily a freight corridor. So, freight is going to drive the decision-making on this corridor. But we have pedestrians on that corridor. We have bikes. We are still going to include facilities. And a lot of the Perkins Road decision-making was around that. We recognize safety was one of the key factors as far as accidents. And not to mention the fact it's a U.S. highway. So, our lane widths, the types of facilities we built, those were driving factors. But all users, transit, bus, freight, vehicles were included in that design. So, it's that commitment to those users in providing some vision and prescription. But then, each different street becomes unique.
So, are, you might even, you might be able to say that if we'd had a complete streets policy before Lakeview, we would have recognized that that was a primary bus transit lane and needed more space? And we might have done something different?
I'd have done, absolutely.
Yeah. I think it's so interesting to hear everybody's comments. And I think that the example Mr. Ridley gave of the, I think I just moved my notes. There we go. Yes. The protected bicycle, the bicycle lane on Country Club. I mean, of course, if, if money were no problem at all, we'd have protected bike lanes, protected intersections, protected, protected business, pedestrian walkways. But what a great compromise and successful solution that was. And after working with the committee on complete streets policy, I think that this is really a driving force in the policy. Look at everything. Don't, you know, we're, this isn't for bikers. It's not for trucks. It's not for cars. It's not for walkers. It's for everyone. And you, and you have to think of every person, piece of equipment, trying to get from one place to another.
You were, when you were talking about what Mr. Ridley said, it was about the sidewalks on Country Club. So, I'm assuming, I'm just going to ask this, that would be safer than bikers riding in the street? Is that, are there any statistics?
It's a difficult term to define, because you're always going to have bikers riding in the street. Okay? And so, the question then becomes, you know, comfort level of that cyclist versus traffic. But definitely, a multi-use path can accommodate a wider variety of users than a single bike lane.
Multi-use path being the 10-foot sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, I'm trying to wrap my head around a lot of this. I was, I was, I remember when the consultant came in and talked about complete streets. And I was excited about it as well as the council was. I think we liked the idea. But, but, I don't think I understood what complete streets means. And I'm not sure it means the same thing to everyone. And we need to get there. Because the bus terminal, I'm going to pick on Lakeview. That's a, we got a metaphor right there, a hard case. a, we got a metaphor right there, a hard case. The transit system hub was there prior to these lanes being restripped. So whether you have a complete streets program or not, how did we get to a point of wanting to put bicycle lanes in there and narrow all those lanes so that the buses are now creating a problem? I mean, I'm really not looking for an answer, because I, that was a mistake. And when you said to me, you proposed the idea of going to three lanes as a way to accommodate wider lanes, why would we take a major street? This council, not these guys, not me, but previous councils had already built a bridge over Boomer. They have, they had already built a four-lane major collector, because the purpose that the council had back then was to get another major east-west crossing point across this town. So why would we scale that down? And why would we make it difficult for, you know, I say OSU buses, but you've got public school buses too. This condition also exists on Western Avenue, and it also exists on 12th Street. I drive that every day, and I guarantee you, I drive a little bitty Ford Edge. I don't feel comfortable in that middle lane. I'm sorry, I don't. I'm too close to the yellow line and oncoming cars. I drive on the outside lane, and I'm sorry, but my tires are close to the bike lane.
Yeah, and I-
I'm creating an unsafe situation in my vehicle.
Sure.
So I think the council needs to spend some time-
Yeah, absolutely.
-thinking about what are these implications? Because since we had that planning session and the consultant come in, things have kind of changed. What I thought complete streets included was, do we have mobility possibilities for everyone? Is, are there wheelchair access points for every major intersection? Is our parking program designed well so that bicycles and pedestrians and cars can navigate a street? I mean, when we build a new street, yeah, let's talk about all these bike lanes and lane widths and all that, but most of our streets are already here. And if complete streets means we're going to start going through our existing streets and re-marking them to where the lanes are so tight, I'm concerned that the general public is going to be concerned about what we're doing. I don't think that's what any of us intended. So we need to talk about this. If this, if the policy means what we're getting on our major roadways, then we need to try something else, I think. I have to admit, I'm frustrated with this, I really am, because I don't know if the city's trying to tell OSU, get rid of your bus system, we don't want it. I can't put those big wide buses out on those roads. That's an unsafe situation.
I think that's a bit of a jump.
No, the lane is nine foot wide. Our bus is 11.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying-
We are in somebody else's lane.
...for the city to say, "Oh, OSU, don't use your buses." I think that's a bit of a jump of a statement.
That's the position the city is putting us in inadvertently. I don't think the city wants to turn down a free bus system. I think most of the community likes us having it. But you're putting us in a very difficult position with this kind of practice. Okay, so I'm a little over the top, I'll admit it.
Sure.
But I need to make the point, because I don't think we've made-
And like I said, there are lots of different ways you can have design decisions to make a transportation system. I come from 10 years of experience at the University of Georgia, Athens, Georgia, 120,000 population, buses, transit. There are a lot of different ways you can do things. What, I think, we are, we're at a disconnect. What does council want us to do on the street system? Complete streets is one policy. You, as an elected body, can give us a different policy. But to me, adopting a complete streets policy, you're not prescribing lane widths. Like I said, that's a design-level decision detail, and that's what we've been doing. We've had a project, we've made design decisions, we've recommended that up, and it's been approved, but like I said before, does this conform to what this committee wants? I mean, we're hearing from you, no, it doesn't.
I actually had a gentleman that's a bicycle enthusiast tell me he doesn't feel comfortable using the lanes on 12th Street.
Sure, right.
I didn't solicit that, he came to me.
Yeah. I think you'll find different opinions. What they meet are the minimum standards, okay? I can tell you, a three-lane facility on that road will handle the traffic volume.
But again, the city decided to build a four-lane-
And so, Joe, Council Weaver, there's things about four lanes that you're creating inherent safety conflicts between the left turns with a four lane that decrease your capacity. Like I said, these are decisions kind of down in the weeds. The bigger question is, from a transportation policy standpoint, do you want us to go in this direction of a complete streets, all-inclusive commitment to safety and all users? I mean, that's the simple question we're asking. If you want us to go in that direction, then we can get further along into the discussions of how do we accommodate those different users on different corridors? But, you know, I don't, I don't want to be presumptuous and spend a lot of effort saying this is how we're going to design all these corridors without having some input from the council on the direction we need to go.
Let me interject something just real quickly here, because I've got some history. Lakeview was constructed with money from ODOT. When, you know, Mr. Taylor was up here talking about all the millions of dollars ODOT's spending. And Lakeview in the early 2000s was constructed, that four-lane road, with ODOT money. The cross-section that they, Mr. Ridley talked about, and Vice Mayor Darlington mentioned on Country Club Road, Country Club Road is a four-lane road with a 10-foot path on one side of it. When Lakeview was originally constructed in the early 2000s, it was a four-lane road with a 10-foot path on side of it, exactly the same as what Country Club is today. So if Country Club today works well, then I would think that Lakeview would work well too. But my concern is, now we're obviously aware of a hazard here that I think we are obligated to do something about. And that's, I think we need to address this situation pretty quickly, because this is probably of imminent concern. But if, really, if a four-lane road with a 10-foot path meets your intent of complete streets, or is a good cross-section, then that's something that's already there that we could even go back to. So-
I think it's like Pat said, you know, not every street can be complete in every sense of the word.
Right.
But some can and some can't. And we just need to figure out and have the judgment to be able to apply.
The thing that really resonated with me, that Dr. Peak said, was actually the number two comment, prioritizes safety for all users. And I cannot overemphasize how important that really is. You know, that's, all users have to be able to use the facilities safely. And so, that's got to be the underlying criteria there. And of course, we're always going to be dealing with constraints, whether it's fiscal constraints or physical constraints, we're going to have to be able to address those. And it's going to be somewhat on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, and I think, just to underscore what Council Weaver and Mr. Blankenship have said, it's, again, it's not that some streets are complete and some streets aren't.
Right.
It's that the city has a complete street attitude, culture. Some streets, safety is top priority. Some streets are not safe for walkers. Some streets are not safe for trucks. Some streets are not safe for bicyclists. In this policy, you examine that, and you have specific areas. It just means, it's not that everybody can, everybody or anything can drive on every street, it's that every person, every vehicle, every bus can get from point A to point B safely and efficiently in the city.
Exactly.
I think we all took an oath of office to protect everybody, so that does need to be our number-one concern, and I hear the problems, and I also feel like there are solutions that we can come up with and make this better with our expertise and with citizen input and with working with ODOT.
I have a question for Mr. Spradling, and he may not know the answer. Do you know the percentage of non-OSU students that use the bus system?
I don't comprehend, but it continues to rise. Like I said, the disability services we have, it's like 99% community, and that's about, it costs us about $30 per ride, for those disability riders.
Okay.
So it's through our grant fund, so that's a big deal. That's 11,000 rides a year, and the people pay $1.50 per ride, which is all the pay off the topic. When we took that over, the city ran a mini-bus program, and we took that over, and now we have to help with 2,000 or 7,000, which is, then we were running one bus, and now we're running three buses. A year and a half ago, we invested in a route optimizing software that helps route buses, so we can optimize all the trips to eliminate and add four buses. Those three new buses are $170,000 a piece in CNG. And those, I showed you the pictures of the coaches, those are $650,000 a piece, but we really, we only damage, we've got eight and a half being involved, just our current CNG, we completely, not even counting our backup, so like a little effect there. It forces that out.
But in fairness, you might want to point out the level of federal funds we receive every year, which is how we're able to do the transit.
Yes, that's absolutely true. Those buses were all the currently federal funded. The original buses were OSU-funded, they're currently federal-funded, paid 83% through federal funds, because they all are on federal. And that was my main concern on Lakeview, and I'll mention the sidewalk. There's a 10-foot high sidewalk on Lakeview, and in my mind, there was a reason for bike lanes, because of that sidewalk already. It runs a full length for miles, and I don't see it for anything. I think it just got pushed in there because they're trying to do everything the same, make it accessible, but I think we made it more restricted. And I didn't realize how narrow it is, until I actually audited the buses, and we were actually doing audits, and they found the audit delivery of the buses, like, well, we got to go for a ride, and we're like, all right. One of my friends had him, he let me on, let's go. So I took him for a ride, and I hadn't driven one in yet, and I'm like, this is narrow. And I was concerned for myself, I'm like, no, I hadn't driven in a while, but it's really narrow. That seemed like concern at that time, to realize how narrow the street was, so that brought it to my attention.
I don't know which person would be better to ask on this, but do you see, I mean, in my mind, I would think, could we have certain routes that, with the buses travel? I mean, buses typically only travel on the main roads, they're not on the side streets. Could, I mean, a lot of the main roads could handle this multi-use path that you're, I mean, like, we could look at in this complete streets, putting, I mean, just what we're going to do on Perkins.
Yes, I can answer that.
I mean, it seems like that, and that's the easiest solution.
Absolutely.
Some routes, obviously, in some of this, you know, I guess it travels down ninth.
It makes sense, Hallvein, Farm Road, you can on campus, that's our street, the OSU street, and we did bike lanes. But it's plenty wide, we still have, the lanes are still 11 feet, and I think there's still 12 feet with bike lanes, and they work very good. They're 12, their lanes, less than five, but they work great.
Where's that at?
On Farm Road.
Oh, okay.
That was recently restructured, and it works, it works great. Close to the streets, the panel, we speak to the main streets, but it really doesn't feel important. All right, they have buses, they have to go into the neighborhoods and get their passports without a doubt.
But they're not as wide.
But there's a concern.
Yeah.
Not as wide as that.
And I think that's real key, to have OSU on any committee that's reviewing and assessing these situations, to provide that information. And there's no doubt that we can, you know, accommodate the users, and safely accommodate the users. But once again, and we're going to have to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis, because once again, we're going to have constraints, physical and fiscal constraints. And then that's when the choices are going to have to be made, and that's when we're going to have to be able to communicate well to all of the users of why we make decisions the way that we do.
Well, and that should be part of the policy. My guess is the reason to do this policy is to help guide how we move forward.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the, another key part of what's in your policy statement. But basically, we have in there that, let's see the point. Design, it's number three under vision, "Design the transportation network to improve our community's quality of life through collaborative development with all users of the transportation system to foster desirable transportation systems." If you'll recall, we talked about the context-sensitive design approach we used for Perkins Road. We had a representative of 25 different stakeholders, including OSU Transit, was part of that concept development process. That's not something we've typically done in a road project, but it would be an outcome of having this policy. Is that what you want us to do on a regular basis?
Yes.
Would we have to, the, I thought there was an ordinance that the bikes have to ride on the road, though, correct? We would have to up-
I think the only limitation is in the downtown area under the current ordinance.
Only in downtown?
Yes. Central Business District, yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's not citywide?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, I mean-
The hours and hours of hours of district conflict is possible.
Okay.
Mayor, I know I have come across totally as an OSU homeboy tonight, but I want to remind everybody that the bus system does serve the community just like the city services, and getting our students around is part of the community as well. And Mr. Spradling talked about our pair of transit buses. We're serving the same people.
Mm-hmm. We are a team, and we know that. We know that, so.
So I look a little more orange tonight than normal.
Well, we just need to do it safely. We need to do it safely.
Vice Mayor.
I'm just curious, I'll put on my being-on-the-committee hat. And I think that this is a frustration for many citizens who are on committees, that we do the hard work, we try to think about a lot of things, we rely on the expertise of our professional people, and then, so, I would really like to, I mean, you mentioned citizen input. We've had citizen input on this. I mean, there's certainly the opportunity to have more, always opportunity to have more. What kind of timeline, and what do you expect to happen after tonight?
I want to ask a question to you as well. Could we not, I mean, I don't know if we need to move forward with this, but I would like to also see, and I don't want this more discussion, but a design of some multi, just with OSU partnering, saying, these are the paths we think should be for buses, and put the multi-use path in, and then these are the paths where it can accommodate both. I mean, I think, could we move forward with talking about that, or do we still need to be in this stage? Because in my mind, we're not signing off on anything. We say, let's move forward, let's, it's my understanding, you were wanting us to give you some direction to come back with a plan to sign off on.
Well, whether it's this policy or some modification, you know, like I said at the beginning, this is the starting point. We kind of want to know, are you committed to accommodating all users, which I seem to hear, in general sense, you are, and you're committed to safety? If there are specific things in this policy that you think are unworkable, I think that's feedback we'd like to hear. Or if there's something prescriptive that you think needs to be more in this policy. I mean, you know, and specifically talking about transit, I mean, they're listed several times. The committee, like I said, include Nigel Jones, who's a university architect, Tom Williams, who's a bus driver. So, I mean, we have had that type of communication, and like I said, the last part is, this doesn't prescribe specific design standards on certain roads, but it points us off in that direction to develop that and bring it back to you.
You know, Pat, I think it's all in the execution, just as, you know, Jason's advising us not to get down in the weeds. I'll bet y'all didn't get too far down in the weeds on this kind of thing in the committee work, it was pretty high-level. You know, I guess I'm speaking up for the guys that were on that committee. Had they seen some of this more specific, they wouldn't have been so quick to go with it. But I think we need to spend more time with this. I don't want to get rid of complete streets. The essence of the idea is great. We're all for all these modes of transportation, but it's all in the execution.
And I'm, I totally agree, and we didn't get into the weeds, although we tried to in the committee meetings. That's the next step. The weeds are the next step. And there's no reason to do step two if you haven't done step one, unless you just want to do a piecemeal, whatever we've done all along.
I, I don't, my personal opinion is, I don't think we need to have another committee meeting. I mean, you guys have done the work, that's not, I think, for me, I just need to look at it. I mean, just to have it handed to me tonight doesn't allow me enough time to look through it and figure out what questions that I may personally have to ask you, or, and that's, you know, thank you for doing this. I think it is a step one, you're right. But I think I need to have time to look at it and see what else I can.
Mayor, would there be a way that we, you know, Mr. Taylor came all the way over here to speak about those projects. to speak about those projects. Would there be a way that we could hear more about some of those future projects? Because with us having that transportation initiative coming up, I think it would be good for the community to know...
Could we do a study session?
Are you talking about tonight?
No.
No, no, I wouldn't say tonight. I would say a separate one that would be...
I think a study session is a great idea.
Having a conversation about this that allows people to hear dialogue.
I'm interested in what ODOT is thinking about us.
Mm-hmm.
More specifically, if that would be possible.
Well, they're thinking something when we hear 100 million.
That's a big buzz, huh? That's a big buzz.
I like how they're thinking.
Big buzz, no way.
I like that.
Well, I don't think there's any argument that as a city councilor, six months into it, I think one of the top things we hear from people is transportation and roads and safety, and, my gosh, I want to make sure we're making the right decision.
I do, too. I guess what I want, I would be happy to vote tonight, I'm, I would like to do a little bit more homework, but how would, if we had had complete streets, how would we have found the problem on Lakeview? That's what I want to know before I vote on complete streets, is that it is a problem-solving...
So, you would have had a different project, design, development approach, okay? So, Lakeview was basically a recommendation from our office to city manager that was then approved and basically sent to ODOT to implement. So, with complete streets, it basically would be engaging all affected users as we develop those design projects. It could also be us looking at developing procedures for when we do a resurfacing project, you know, do we look at changing lane widths on the street? And what are your criteria for accepting certain lane widths on a street?
How do you change, Wayne, lane widths on a street when you're resurfacing? I just don't understand.
It's restry, simply restry.
It's paint. I don't want to be flippant about, but it's just paint. So, I mean, if the issue on Lakeview is that it's too narrow, there are grinders, I mean, our contractor made the error on Western Road. We have that nice strip that was ground out there. If you want us to do that, I mean, we can have that executed on Lakeview. But, you know, we operate with, there are a lot of different design guidelines for width out there, and that's what we use in looking at it, and what, you know, what are we trying to achieve on that corridor?
Great.
I think Dr. Peak's explanation of the committee that he had, of stakeholders doing Perkins Road, in the committee work, we talked about, you know, this was kind of an interesting thing that people couldn't wrap their heads around, getting different stakeholders, and the example was, well, what if there's a school on a street? You've got to talk to the school about what kind of traffic lanes they need for pickup and drop-off, where buses are going to come. So, every street has different needs and many different stakeholders, and if you followed this policy carefully, you would have talked to OSU transportation people and said...
Before you striped.
Before you striped, before you did anything. And then you would have known. It would have prevented...
Is there something we can do? Okay, okay. Well, is there anything that we can do or should be doing to fix Lakeview right now if this is a big problem? Or is that something that we have to wait and do through complete streets?
No. I think that's, from my perspective, it's been made, you know, obvious to us that there's a hazard there. And so, I think we have an obligation to deal with that immediately. And I guess, you know, I would say that, you know, I understand that, you know, we need to get this message out, but people need to understand that if we remove the bike lanes, we still have the 10-foot path there, but the reason we would remove the bike lanes is because of a safety issue, and that, you know, is number one. The other, the other thing is to look at different striping configurations, a three-lane street. But when this street was built, it was built with ODOT funds, and it was built as a four-lane road, and it was built as a four-lane road because it was four-lane to the east, and if you look in the step plan, which there was a lot of effort and a lot of people involved in that, and it shows that continuing on to the west and going over to Country Club Road, which is now being built as a four-lane. So, that capacity continuation, I think, is something that we need to, you know, keep in mind.
Well, and I, I mean, I don't know, just, I'm not a transportation guy, but just thinking, I don't think removing the lanes is gonna do much right now because, I mean, there's some cyclists in the room that probably can confirm this for me, but they're gonna ride in the road no matter what. If we take those lanes out, the cyclists...
And they have it right?
Right. They do.
I know, so I'm saying, I don't think we should spend our resources to remove those lanes. At least it lets people know there may be a cyclist there for right now until we figure out a better solution.
But there's also, you've seen those shareos markers that remind motorists that they're supposed to share the road with cyclists?
The shareos were actually out there previously.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe this is something, Mr. Dorman, I mean, if we're aware of a hazard, what is our, what is our legal obligation or liability if we, if something, if a bus were to hit a bicyclist out there, would we have some sort of liability since we're aware of the potential issue?
You have immunity to the extent that you haven't done anything in the context of a particular roadway situation. It's always gonna be very context-oriented, so you're gonna have to know specifically what the problem is before you would know whether you would have immunity or not in that particular situation. But you certainly can be found liable if you are aware of a situation and you don't take some reasonable action within a reasonable period of time.
Okay. And the liability is just one aspect. I mean, the personal safety of the bicyclists and the individuals who are conducting the vehicles out there are certainly paramount, you know, from my perspective is so. Whatever we do, I think we need to do something to, hopefully, to make those a safer corridor for travel.
I don't, you know, I don't think Stillwater's unique. I'm sure Secretary Ridley can confirm this. Well, I mean, cities all over Oklahoma are doing multi-use things. There's bikes and buses and everything working together. And so, I think, and even outside of Oklahoma, Pat and I love to talk about New Orleans. I mean, New Orleans is a perfect example. It's a very old city, but somehow they have bikes and a trolley and cars and people walking all over the place. And so, we're not special. I mean, there has to be a way that we can get this together. I think Tulane and Loyola are a lot bigger than Oklahoma State, and so, surely they have more people than us, and so...
Actually, Tulane's smaller.
Okay, Tulane's smaller.
Maybe together, maybe.
But I'm just saying, I think we have the ability to figure out what works best, and we have resources out there. We all know what the city wants, it's just a matter of...
Getting there. It's not new to the world, but it's new to us, Mayor.
So, our next step, are there questions that we need to answer? Are there...
You probably have a time.
So, the things I've heard, more time.
What would you like us to do and when, should we have a, are you wanting a study session on this before we go any further?
I would. I really would. I think, I need to have some dialogue. This is, this is new for me, so I really want to make the right decisions and have the, all the information that I need.
I agree.
Could we have our guest back then to talk so we could all talk? Could, Mr. Dorman, do you know if our agenda is full in October or November? October, special study session?
I think there's, Ms. Osmeys is probably...
You could cancel the October, no, this is November study.
Then November was this one?
The October, the October, it's November.
Has nothing on there? Well, it does now.
It'll be back, same time, same channel. But if we could add to that study session some discussion of, you know, what projects has ODOT already committed to? We don't have to try to pull out of any extra projects, but what's already on your docket that the community needs to be aware of and how the city fits into that? I think that would be very interested, interesting in the...
That would be Mr. Taylor and Secretary Ridley coming back, both? Yes? Yes? Okay.
Thank you.
And we also have a vote that's coming up in November.
Right.
And it would be nice for the public to have all their information that they need to vote on that date.
So, I guess, councilors, I encourage you to think about, to look over complete streets. I want to thank the committee, the Complete Streets Committee and Dr. Peak for all of this work that's gone on. Please know it's not in vain, and we're going to do something with it. We want to do something with it, and maybe in one more month or whenever we have the study session, we will, we can vote on it then. I think, what I heard tonight is we all want to make sure that we're doing all of the right things for all of, all of Stillwater, all of the different streets, so, thank you. And I'm looking at you, Vice Mayor, because you were on that committee, but to all the citizens who were on that committee and spent so much time. I know that was a long process, and you worked very hard, so thank you.
Well, I would just challenge all of us as councilors to read the policy carefully and to make comments that are germane to the policy, not to what we imagine that it might mean, and that we make specific suggestions to Dr. Peak about anything in the policy that doesn't work, so that we don't get lost in the weeds.
Is this good, Dr. Peak? So, in one month or when, Patty, when is the next?
26th.
26th?
26th.
26th, so we will talk about it then.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Speaking of the 26th, before I go any further, Patty, did we have another guest that is, Melissa Parkinson here? Parkinson, yeah, no?
No, that's, that's...
Okay, all right. Councilors, anything else?
Are we looking at, man, I don't know if I want to say this, but are we looking at the texting ordinance within the city? Have you got any information on that? I know we've received a couple of comments on that with regards to, for the city, I was reading a little bit about it, and basically it just makes it easier. Somebody gets a ticket, like, the city, and, I mean, are we...
We have a copy of Oklahoma City's proposed ordinance, and we're looking at it, but if you want us to go ahead and bring something forward, we can certainly put something together fairly quickly.
I thought we asked, didn't we?
I thought we did, yeah, that's, Joe brought it up, so, Joe was the first one to say something. Have that on record.
We'll have it here for you to look at on the 5th.
Okay.
Because, I mean, Oklahoma City, Norman, all have passed one, I think.
Oklahoma City has, I'm not sure about Norman.
Or maybe more. One of them just recently did, I know.
I thought Norman was talking about.
Norman was, okay.
They're all talking about it. So, reports from officers and boards, Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, Ben.
Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you so much for having me this evening.
Thank you for...
But just for tonight.
Thank you for just being here tonight.
Invite, invite me again sometime soon, please.
Miscellaneous from the councilors, anything else?
Oh, I guess Dr. Peak will be at the chamber. We have an event on Thursday from 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. He's gonna talk about transportation tax, so if you are around from 7:30 to 8:30, Stillwater Chamber, it's on Main Street, I don't know the address, but it's the chamber, it's open to the public, it's gonna be very formal. He'll talk about several things, take questions, give us a lot of information, so if you're free, we'd love to have you in here from Dr. Peak.
Luckily, Dr. Peak is the director of transportation because he is the man on the move. The League Women Voters has invited him to come on October the 26th, 29th, Thursday, October 29th. You'll hear about all these dates. He'll also be at Oak Creek Community on November 5th, and he's gonna be doing an exciting, traveling presentation, probably the last week of October, so he'll be really...
He's busy. He's also, where is he? He's also accompanied me to a couple of things to speak about the half-cent transportation tax. So, we appreciate you, Dr. Peak, very much. Who's on the radio tomorrow?
I am.
Okay.
I'm gonna talk about weeds.
About weeds?
Yeah.
Okay.
For...
Make sure...
Yeah.
Make sure you tune in. All right. Anything else, councilors? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I do have a couple of things.
Okay.
Just an update on the tennis project. As you may know, this council, this council budgeted $400,000 last year to build a tennis complex at Couch Park, joint effort between the city and the Stillwater Tennis Association. Representatives from the association, the tennis association, have been meeting with city staff and studio architecture to come up with a design for the courts with a goal to build six courts with the finished project. The existing fieldhouse, which was the old fieldhouse for Hamilton Field, will be remodeled later in the project. Currently, the plans are 95 percent complete and have been sent to the United States Tennis Association for review. So, for those of you who are just kind of keeping your rackets in the closet, the project is moving forward.
Excellent news. Anything else?
I have some, too. The Stillwater Fire Department loves pink, and it was in the paper. It was a great article about last week firefighters and staff at the fire administration building dyed their hair pink in support of their intern whose mother was battling breast cancer. So, hats off to the firefighters who did that and dyed their hair pink. So, look for more from the Stillwater Fire Department as they support Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October. So, that was a kickoff. And then the city of Stillwater is proud to sponsor this week the Unmanned Aerial Systems Open Innovation Forum, which is being held this week at OSU. This forum invites companies, manufacturers, researchers, industry experts to discuss drones and much more. It's another way Stillwater is still pioneering.
Still pioneering.
Oh, I have another one.